Okay. We're recording now?
Could y'all hear all that drama?
No, sir.
Okay. Just make sure you could hear me. I had the phone going off, a radio going off, and I was like, oh, great.
No, we did not hear any drama.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I'm not good-looking enough to have a camera, so this is all you get, that little icon.
That's perfectly okay. We're just glad that you could make it today. Hello, how are you?
I'm good. How are you doing?
I'm well, thank you.
Good. So Dr. Divney is gonna be joining us as well, so.
Okay, awesome. We have two more panelists that we are waiting on, and as soon as they join us, we will begin. All right, well, as of right now, we are only missing one more participant, and if they don't join us in the next two minutes, we can go ahead and begin.
Would it be okay if we go ahead and start introductions?
Yeah, we can do that.
All right. You wanna start us off?
Yeah, one second, please. All right, hello, everyone. I just want to welcome everyone to this year's SGA Virtual Town Hall. I am so excited that we are finally getting to put this on after multiple trials of trying to. So I just want to thank everyone today who is able to join us. It's greatly appreciated, and I know all of the students who have questions or brought up concerns are delighted to have y'all here today and to answer them. So, as we begin, we will each go through, or all of y'all will go through y'all's panel, or, excuse me, I'm so sorry. And the next slide has all of the panelists, and y'all can introduce yourselves and give us a little bit of a insight of what y'all do on your day-to-day job. My name is Madison Starr, and I am the SGA President this year. And Melanie Heard, right there, sorry, is our Acting Vice President this year. And so Ms. Cassie Brunner, would you mind starting us off, please?
Sure. Hello, my name is Cassie Brunner. I am the Director of Library and Learning Services, as well as one of the Phi Theta Kappa Advisors here at BC. Basically, day-to-day, I just manage these two departments. We make sure that students, faculty, and staff have access to all the resources they could use for their classes, whether that's books, databases, journals, magazines, newspapers, anything like that. We do instruction to help students learn how to navigate our databases and how to do scholarly research. And for Learning Services, we do proctor testing. So typically, in normal semesters, we do the proctor testing for online classes. And that's a little bit altered at the moment, since almost everything is online. But typically, you would schedule a makeup exam, or if you had an online class, you would go in there, and my staff would proctor your test for you. And they also offer other services, like book scanning, and they can help you with learning how to navigate D2L and things like that. So we're just really here to help students in their coursework.
Thank you, Mr. Dietrich.
Sure, I guess we're going in order on the list. Good way to do it. So I'm Jeff Dietrich, I'm the Dean of Instruction at the college, and proud part-time math instructor as well. My, gosh, what do I do every day? My area of responsibility is all of our credit programs and instruction, which include all of our faculty in our instructional divisions, working with our division chairs on class assignments, facilities, labs, classrooms, all that stuff. So everything related to our instructional programs at BC falls under my area.
Awesome, thank you. Ms. Greathouse?
Joe, you're muted.
Sorry, I started talking, and then I went. Nobody can hear me. I'm Joe Greathouse, I'm Dean of Student Services, and the areas that I'm responsible for are the AICIP program, admissions and counseling, I mean, admissions and registrar's area, advising, counseling and testing, student success center, and the writing center. And I'm also responsible for student conduct. So kind of a lot of support services for students is my area of expertise.
Thank you. And Mr. Leverett, did I say that correctly?
You sure did. I've been in law enforcement for 25 years, so I've been called a lot worse. You did great. As it says on the slide, I am the Chief of Police and Director of Campus Safety here for Brazosport College. My main duties include the administration and supervision of the entire campus safety program, which includes the Police Department. My job is to make sure my employees are enforcing state law and college policies. And I'm also a liaison with the other state and local law enforcement agencies around this area to make sure I have a good working relationship with everyone else. I'm here just to hopefully safeguard and enhance campus awareness on the area and to provide support to any students any way I can.
Awesome, appreciate it. Mr. Martinez?
Hello, my name is Jerry Martinez. I'm the Director of Admissions and the Registrar here at Brazosport College. Our office oversees processing of applications, academic records, compliance. We oversee processing transcripts. A big part of what we're doing nowadays is helping with the system conversion that we're gonna all move into. And mainly ensuring that the institution and the students are protected by making sure that we remain compliant with institutional and state and federal guidelines.
Appreciate it. Today, Ms. Pritchett will not be able to join us, but she is the Honors Program Director. Mr. Ramirez? Arnold, you're muted.
Arnold, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Yes, Arnold Ramirez, Director of Counsel and Testing. I've been here for a while, a long time now. And so currently, thoroughly love what I do, but I oversee testing, whether that be TSI, credit by exam, CLAB, nursing-related or health-related program testing, and law enforcement-related testing and so forth. Also advising primarily a new show, a lot of the initial onboarding of students when they first come in and visit with us about what all they need to do to enroll at the college. So we try to provide that information, make that as easy as possible for students. But also continuing advising after they are enrolled with us. Also oversee our Veterans Advisor and Career Services Advisor and Disabilities Person as well. So a lot of student-related services and work under the direction of Joe, who introduced herself earlier. Glad to be here.
We appreciate you being here. Ms. Sanchez?
Hi, I'm Priscilla Sanchez. I'm the Dean of School and College Partnerships. It's a fairly new role at Brazosport College, and I am the liaison with our educational partners. And so I work with each of our school districts and our community educational partners to make sure that students have a smooth transition into Brazosport College and work with them to offer opportunities.
Awesome. Thank you for being here today. And Ms. Watts?
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Tracy Watts, and I am the Vice President of College Advancement here at Brazosport College. So that has various different facets that fall within that. I am the Executive Director of the Brazosport College Foundation, which is the fundraising arm of Brazosport College. I also oversee financial aid and scholarships, marketing and communications, which includes the peer recruiters, the call center, our print shop. I also oversee the Clarion, which is our 600-seat performing arts center that we have on campus. And in addition to those roles, of course, I also am the Incident Commander for the COVID-19 response for Brazosport College. So I'm happy to be here with you all today.
We appreciate. And last but certainly not least, Mr. Yertu?
Hi, my name is Daniel Jarrytu, and I'm the Director of Financial Aid and Scholarships Office. And I oversee that our students apply and receive their financial aid and scholarships in a timely manner. And we help them, you know, with the process of applying, and any questions that they may have.
Greatly appreciate it. And Ms. Divney, would you mind giving us a little bit about yourself and what you do at BC, please? You're muted. No, ma'am.
I'm not muted, but my volume's not working again, so. Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you.
Okay. I'm Dr. Shelley Divney. I'm the Vice President of Academic and Student Affairs, which pretty much encompasses everybody that just introduced themselves, with the exception of the Chief of Police, Tracy, and Daniel, the Director of Financial Aid. So all those other people are under this same umbrella with me.
Wonderful. All right, so going forward, in the order of the list of our panelists will be topics and questions that were emailed to the SGA account or myself. Not all of these questions might be specific to just you. Some of y'all might be able to help answer one another's questions a little bit. And if y'all wanna jump in, just jump in. This is the best way for our students to have their questions answered throughout this time. So, Ms. Brunner? So the first question that we have is, what are some helpful resources that the library offers that you wish some of the students would use more or might not be aware of?
Um, well, I wish that everything got used more, to be honest with you. We have some amazing print books, both educational and leisurely reading. And if there's a book that we don't have that you would like us to have, we're more than happy to look into ordering it for you. And so our print books, we wish got circulated a lot more than they are. And databases, we know sometimes students may think it's easier to just hop on Google and just search for something. And we have a lot of really great databases that offer you scholarly journal articles and other information that you should be using for your classes, other than just Google results. So we do wish that those got used a little bit more as well. And that also includes eBooks. We have some things that students may not know about. We have audiobooks and that you can download an app and listen to audiobooks for free. Again, if you have a recommendation for us to look into purchasing, we're happy to do that. We also have digital magazines on our app called Flipster. So a lot of just leisurely reading magazines, we have some titles in there as well. So if you do like reading off of a tablet or an e-reader, we have options for that. And I think those are the highlights of things that we wish got used a little bit more.
Um, so a minute ago, you also mentioned that you are an advisor for PTK. Could you tell us some of the things that go into getting a membership into PTK for students, you may be wondering?
Absolutely. So Phi Theta Kappa is the International Honor Society for Two-Year Colleges, and students need to be invited to join. To receive an invitation, they need to have completed 12 hours here at BC. If they're working towards an associate's degree, or six hours completed, if they're working towards a certificate. And students must also have at least a 3.5 GPA. We send out invitations, spring, fall, and now summer semesters as well, to those students who have met those eligibility requirements. There's a one-time membership fee. Right now, it's $85. And that's all students need to do in order to accept membership, is accept that invitation and pay the $85 fee. After that, you'll have access to tons of resources through Phi Theta Kappa headquarters, as well as get information from us here at the college. We have a chapter called the Sci-Sci Chapter. And you'll be able to participate in leadership opportunities, help us with projects, and scholarship money, all sorts of stuff like that. So students who are eligible should receive invitations usually about a month into the semester is when those go out.
Perfect. Appreciate your answers. Jeffrey Dietrich, would it be a possibility to reevaluate only allowing BAT students to take only two courses a term using the accelerated program? For a BC student, they made a comment, "I would like to see more of an effort to include any and all expenses that come up for a course in the tuition and fee cost at the beginning of the semester." For an example, some of the extra costs I've incurred this semester are uniform costs, an extra online book access fee, and an extra CPR certification fee. As a veteran using the post-9/11 GI Bill, these costs are covered only if they are included in tuition and fees. Otherwise, a veteran will pay for them out of pocket. I know these are two kind of separate, or two separate things, obviously, but what are, what do you have to say?
Oh, no, they're both excellent questions. So first with our BAT students. Most of our baccalaureate courses, for those that don't know, are on an eight-week term. So they don't run the entire length of the semester. They either run the first half or the second half of the semester. So the advantage to this is you're taking fewer courses and focusing more intently on those courses. So in the question, when it talks about taking two courses per term, that means two courses in the first half of the semester and two courses in the second half of the semester for a total of four classes for the full semester. So as I mentioned, the advantage to eight-week classes is you can still take four courses, but you're only focused on two of them at a time. So it's, we like to say it's twice the work and half the time, but you're only focusing on half the courses. So there are limits to the number of credit hours, including BAT students. There are a limit to the number of courses students can register for. But those limits can be overridden if a student requests it. So we routinely have students that will wanna add three eight-week courses or add on something on top of that. And we evaluate that on a case-by-case basis. The reason we do the approval process is because we wanna make sure people are making their decisions eyes wide open. And I'll give you an example. A particular student this last spring was requesting, I believe it was an 18-credit hour load, some of which were eight-week courses, and some of them were 16-week courses. And they were requesting such a course load because they were motivated to get their degree done. Well, we like that. We want you to be motivated. We want you to work hard. But after I had visited with this person, it turns out they were working about 30 hours a week at their job, and this was a single parent of two children. And so after we talked about their day-to-day lives and how much time they have, knowing that each day only comes with 24 hours, I think we came to an agreement that 18-credit hours was probably a bit much. So the reason for those limits is simply so we can have those conversations and decide what's most appropriate, given someone's circumstances. So yes, we can allow more than two, but there is a conversation that takes place for that. The other question is a very good one. Some of our programs on campus do have fees other than tuition and books. And that does, it looks like this person was probably uniform costs. Yeah, this was probably a student in one of our health professions. We are working right now towards incorporating some of these costs in with the tuition and fees for the course. In fact, was it last Monday? Did we have the board meeting? I think it was last Monday. Our Board of Regents approved the next year's course fees. And we did, in some programs, include those extra costs as course fees, so they can be counted as financial aid under the, using their financial aid to pay for them. One thing I can do, and will be happy to follow up on, is examine each of our programs and find out, obviously, this is health professions, but we can look at others where some of those extra costs are. And I will talk with our program coordinators and division chairs to see where it may be appropriate to include those as part of the course. Where it gets challenging is if it's part of the course fee, then the college has to purchase some of those things, which is fine. But sometimes, like uniforms, it's a bit challenging to purchase uniforms if they're buying them from a local supplier or if a particular health provider. It gets a little bit more challenging there, but it's a wonderful question and something I will aggressively look into to see what we can do about rolling some of those fees into that.
Thank you. I'm sure the, go ahead.
I just have a question. Is there a way, and Daniel would probably be the most appropriate person to answer this in financial aid, but other than just course feeing courses, is there a way with our financial aid office that they can determine need based on these extra, a list of these extra fees that might be happening in various programs?
Well, what I can tell you in this particular question that was posted by the veteran, he's referring to veteran benefits, so that falls under Tenetia. So I wouldn't be able to speak for that. When it comes to regular financial aid, for those students that aren't financially aid, our cost of attendance does include the categories for books and supplies, which we account for. Now, unfortunately, with the financial aid that we're able to award to our students, we do not cover 100% of the cost of attendance. It's rare that schools do. So whatever accident or financial aid they get, after paying your classes, you know, the refund, they can use to purchase either books or supplies or uniforms or other things that they might need for their classes. Keep in mind that not all students receive financial aid, because not all students apply for financial aid. So it varies from student to student. They're treated on an individual basis. I mean, I could not give you a blanket answer. Other than cost of attendance does account for books and other expenses.
All right. And the next question on the list is for Latonya Graham. She is here with us now. Will you be able to answer this question right now, Ms. Graham?
Can you repeat that, please? My volume is.
Oh, yeah. So would you mind giving us a little bit about like what you do as a career and academic advisor for BC? And then I will ask you your question.
Okay, sure. As she mentioned, my name is Latonya Graham. I am the career service advisor at the college. And what I do is I help the students and alumni with preparing for a transition from classroom to workforce by assisting with their resumes, preparing them for interviews, helping them with job search, even applying for positions in the career center using our computers there. And then I'm also an academic advisor as well. I do generally advise. I've been at the college for seven years, so not sure what else you needed to know.
The next question from a student is, do you provide services for students regarding applying for higher education at other universities or colleges? And what may that look like?
Do, I suppose, can you repeat the question again? I'm sorry.
Do you provide services for students regarding, regarding applying for higher education at other universities or colleges? And what may that look like?
So we, I do, and we do, and we, as in the student workers, and we did have a part-time assistant there, Sarah Ma, who's no longer with us. But we do assist students apply for, to, to go to different colleges and things. So we just really just kind of help them navigate through the application and then direct them to the admissions area, you know, to get their transcripts and things like that. But that's pretty much the gist of it. We also have transfer guides in our career center. And so we help them, we help them with, with navigating through the, the transfer plane.
Appreciate it. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you.
The next round of questions is for Ms. Great House. With COVID-19 restrictions still in place, how can students get involved?
Well, that's the magic question. So we have continued to pro- continue to provide student life programming so that students have the opportunity to be involved in some various activities. If for recreational events, we have bingo on every other Monday. And we have video gaming every week through, excuse me, through the an online feature as well. We partnered with the library and Cassie Bruner in order to continue to provide the discovery series. And so that's another way that students can be involved. We've only had three organizations, SGA being one of them, that have continued to have, be more active since the pandemic began. And some of that has to do with the advisors not always having enough time as they were transitioning from face-to-face classes to online-only work. And so that was a huge transition and took quite a bit of their time. Here's the good grand news. We have a new director of student life who will begin April 5th. His name is Alex Krause, C-R-O-U-S-E. And I know that all of us will be thrilled that he will be joining us. I will hand everything over to him on April 6th. I'll just give him one day to get adjusted and then I'll just give it all to him at that point. I'm looking at your questions and I see that you're asking about when events can begin occurring on campus again. So based on the guidance that we have had from our emergency planning group, it's likely that we'll be able to start having some events with some structure around it on campus in summer. And we will definitely have more events occurring in the fall. We do not usually have a lot of events through the student life office in the summertime. So this, this will, we won't, we won't go beyond what we have typically provided in summer. But we will definitely already have plans in place for the fall. Any follow-up questions on that?
Actually, there's a couple more questions. You already answered one with the director of student life position and how that, with the current update is on that. But how have y'all tried to enable student success during COVID-19?
So all of our services, all of our support services, whether it's admissions and registrar's office, counseling and testing, those services went from being only online to being offered face-to-face. So those are a support type of service that it seems to be easier for people to do things face-to-face than it is to do them online sometimes. Our one-stop registrations were also a way of helping students move through any processes and trying to get things resolved as quickly as we could. In regards to our supplemental instruction, our, also known as SI, our math center and our writing center. We, our math center has been offering, as of this semester, face-to-face, by appointment, sessions with students. And they've offered online sessions ever since the pandemic began. Our SI group, we had our SI coordinator retire. And we just hired another person. She's been in the position maybe a week and a half, maybe two weeks. I'm not exactly, can't quite remember this very moment. She will be working with SI to begin offering some SI, not all, face-to-face. And then also will be providing more face-to-face in the, oh, that she'll start in summer and more in fall. The writing center is already planning on being available in the summertime and additional hours in the fall. Our student mentors are on campus and they have been supporting our, our learning frameworks courses, both online and those that are hybrid.
Well, we appreciate you answering all of our questions and thank you for being here today. Mr. Leverett, are there campus police on site 24/7?
There are not actually police 24/7. We have a combination department of commissioned police personnel and unlicensed security officers. The police are on campus normally, of course, we've adjusted due to COVID, but police are normally on campus from 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. And the night shift, which is 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM, is normally covered by one to two security officers. Now, we have had to adjust because of, of course, it's not been as many events at the DAC or the Clarion this semester. So really, the officers are working Monday through Friday right now. And the other times are being covered by security officers. But they always have a phone and they always have radios now. We have them on the public safety radio system, so they can always be in quick contact with any of us if they need help.
And what are some tips that you suggest to help keep ourselves safe on campus?
Well, there's an old saying that you need to keep your head on a swivel. You need to pay attention to what's going on around you at 540 degrees. You know, you need to always be looking up and around and seeing what other people are doing. I see a lot of students here, a lot of people, they walk in the building or they're walking through the, the parking lots and they're down and they're looking at their cell phones. They don't know what could be coming up behind them. There could be a, you know, a monster coming up behind them and they wouldn't even know it. So really, what I need people to do is to pay attention to your surroundings, look up every once in a while. Another thing to do is if it's dark or if it's getting late, walk out with a group of people. Don't just walk to yourself. Facilities has done a fantastic job getting more lighting in the area. But there are still some areas on this campus that are a little dark. So walk out. And if you can't, you don't have a friend, call us at extension 3030. We'll be glad to send a police officer or a security officer to walk with you to your car. You know, we don't want anybody getting attacked by zombies or coyotes or anybody else. So we're here to keep you safe. And the last thing I'd like people to do is, we are a very safe campus. We are very, very lucky to have such a wonderful environment to live in. But I see a lot of people just leaving their stuff unattended in the student pavilion or in other areas. They just walk off and I look down and there's a laptop or a cellphone or a purse. And, you know, we're giving people an opportunity who might not really want to steal something. But when they see that and they start to salivate and they think, hey, this is quick, easy money, they could take that stuff. So I like people to make sure they're not leaving their stuff unattended. But if they do lose something, please, y'all come to the police department. I've got a ton of stuff in lost and found that belongs to some people and they need to come get it. But other than that, anything else?
That is all. I appreciate your responses. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
All right. Mr. Martinez, would it be possible to have multiple small in-person graduation ceremonies for each degree to obtain social distancing with masks required? Before we answer this question, I will let all of our panelists know that at the end, there are quite a bit of graduation questions. So Mr. Martinez, could you, would you mind answering this one?
This might be a question that we get feedback from Dr. Dividian and Joe. Given my, I've only been, I've been here for 18 months and I've done one virtual ceremony and zero in-person ceremony. So if I can hand this one off to Joe, she probably can speak to this question probably better than I can.
Actually, I'm going to hand this off to Tracy Watts. She leads our commencement programming. So Tracy?
Jeff, you're laughing. Can I hand it off to you?
You can try, but it isn't going to work.
So yes, in my role, I do chair the commencement committee. And many of the individuals that are on our call today, including Joe, including Jerry, are on the commencement planning committee. And it was a very robust discussion that we had as a committee. And please keep in mind that Brazosport College does function and operate a lot of our initiatives and activities through a committee structure that's appointed by our president. So we did meet as a committee and we discussed all of the pros and cons in regards to a commencement ceremony, both in person and virtually for 2021. We keep in mind also that we have over 2,200 people that attend our morning ceremony and then another 2,200 plus that attend our afternoon ceremony, because we have two on the same day. And due to the pandemic, the committee, after discussing it at great lengths, determined that it really would be in the safest, the safest decision to make, both for our graduates as well as for our community, our college community as a whole, to host the 2021 ceremony virtually. That does not mean that we're not going to be celebrating our 21 graduates in, with a great fanfare. We have some really great opportunities that are going to be provided for our 21 graduates, one of which we're bringing back Grad Fest, which is a way that we're able to celebrate our graduates and they can pick up their cap and gowns and invitations and have their professional photo made in their cap and gown, receive some really neat graduate swag-type items, and as well as then opportunities for our faculty, our staff, our families, our graduates to submit messages of congratulations in order to celebrate our graduates on May the 8th. In addition, we're going to be having a parade for all of our 21 graduates on May the 7th on campus. And so we will have more details coming about through, through, about that opportunity. This was not a decision that was taken lightly. And we want so badly to be able to be back in person. However, just with the number of attendees, even if it were limited to just, to just our graduates, and it really got to be more of a large gathering, which as we are following the recommendations from the CDC, the Missouri County Health Department, and just did not feel as though it was something that we were able to do safely in person. And I think I can, can speak for everyone in our committee that we are really excited to be able to go back in to do in-person ceremonies and we are looking forward to that coming back. And, but we congratulate all of our graduates. We know that you've worked very, very hard to meet your, your accomplishments and meet these educational milestones. And we will celebrate you in style here in 21.
Thank you for answering this question. All right. So today, Ms. Pritchett was unable to be with us. But we did have a couple of students ask questions about the honors program. And I will be sharing this link with everyone, so I don't have to read all of this. But there were questions pertaining about how to get into the honors program, as well as what different type of level of honors awards are given, as well as if there's scholarship opportunities for honors program recipients. And then if they had any questions on wanting to get involved or with the honors program, you can always reach out to Carrie at her email at karypritchett@braisesport.edu or her phone number. She also in her email wanted to stress that it's not just about your test scores or GPA. She does look at each person as an individual and how it can best benefit you. And she does apologize for not being here today. Mr. Ramirez, during COVID-19, how did the department adapt to helping students for counseling?
Good question. Back in March, like a lot of other schools, a lot of other departments, we were scrambling, trying to begin to offer all our, our services online. A lot of our students prefer person-to-person. And so some of our processes were already available online, but some of our processes were not. So we quickly established, I guess, a more coordination among all the students, our e-counseling, where we were helping a lot of our, our persons, our students on, online. We had to be expanded to include all the department, not just our e-counselor. So we developed some JOT forms and, and started working with financial aid and with admissions so we could coordinate our, our, our processes with their processes as well. We also added Zoom to our, got Zoom accounts for all our advisors and our staff so that we would then have that option available to students. So like a lot of other places, I think initially, we scrambled to try to, again, accommodate all our, our services to an online environment. But before long, we were up and ready and I think providing a very good service to students. But yeah, this pandemic did catch a lot of us off guard.
Really did. And I, I do think BC has done a really fantastic job in catching the ball as some people have dropped it. So.
Thank you.
No problem. All right. Ms. Sanchez, will dual-credit students be able to be involved in the workforce program?
Yes. So dual-credit students are able to participate in workforce programs. That includes programs like instrumentation and process technology, where our catalyst program is focused. And that students can also be involved in automotive. We have dual-credit students who've earned their certificates in automotive. Drafting and welding is popular and available on high school campuses for college credit. So it is, they are able to be involved. We're happy to work through any students who are interested, working through those pathways with them.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. Ms. Watts, who makes the final decision that all COVID-19 protocols, including wearing a face mask, covering, completing a daily health screening when on campus and social distancing will remain in effect despite government Abbott's executive order giving us permission to downgrade such restriction?
Sure. So when the COVID-19 global pandemic hit back in March of 2020, the college already has a committee in place called the Emergency Planning Committee, which is chaired by Chief Leverett. That committee immediately began to meet during spring break. That committee immediately began to meet during spring break in March of twenty twenty. And we then formed a subgroup called the Emergency Policy Group, which we um follow the FEMA Emergency Management Structure and by NIMS. So the Emergency Policy Group was in alignment with their recommendations. The Emergency Policy Group, it consists of Dr. Balak, the college president, our five vice presidents. So that's Dr. Diviny, Marshall Campbell, Anne Bartlett, myself. And then our CFO at the time was David Marshall and now it is Lisa Templar. And then our Director of Marketing and Communications, Lauren McCormick, um serves as the Emergency Policy Group. So during altered operations as a result of the global pandemic, all decisions go through the EPG group. We went from meeting every day, starting in March of twenty twenty. So then we shifted to four times a week and now we meet twice a week for very lengthy conversations. Today's meeting was around two and a half hours and that we met this morning. And so we take every aspect into consideration. And we are constantly keeping an eye on guidelines that are updated from the CDC, the Missouri County Health Department, the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board, TEA, as that um affects Priscilla and her area and with her role as the Dean of School and College Partnerships. And of course, we have our faculty that teach on the high school campuses. So we look at everything holistically. Many of the events or the activities or things that you have seen on campus have all gone through EPG for consideration. And in addition to that, um as you all see on our Tuesday, Thursday messaging, the messaging is all approved through the Emergency Policy Group as well.
Thank you. And what are some criteria that must be met for BC to lift restrictions that are in place? Could there be stages that be, that get involved?
Sure. So I think that um we can all attest to the stages that we've already gone through since the pandemic hit in March of twenty twenty. And we had phased approaches in returning for the fall semester, fall of twenty nineteen, for the summer. And then we continue to see and monitor all the different guidelines and the requirements that come forward as we learn more about the pandemic, as vaccines roll out, as more and more people have been exposed and tested positive for COVID nineteen and the various effects and the various research that is done in relation to the pandemic. So um we, we really look at the metrics and we look at this every time that we meet. The metrics both in globally, as well as within the United States, as well as within Texas, and drill down into Missouri County as well as Harris County because we have a lot of our employees that may travel in from outside of Missouri County. So we continue to look at those metrics and to see when things slow down and when numbers increase. And but ultimately, our guiding principles are the guidance that we receive from the CDC, the Missouri County Health Department, the Coordinating Board, and of course, Governor Abbott. Um, and we take all of those into consideration. So our hope are is that we, as Joe alluded to earlier, that we will see more things and more on-campus presence in the summer, more face-to-face classes in the summer, even more in the fall. These are all of our hopes as we're looking forward to a phased and planned approach. And then sometime in the near future, maybe Brazosport College looking a little bit more like it did pre-pandemic. So um it is, there's a lot that goes into consideration. These decisions are not taken lightly and um the EPG really wants to keep safety at the forefront of our mind.
Appreciate it. All right. And then the last question, if we as students desire to be more flexible with these restrictions, when will Brazesport College be able to concern, address these concerns?
So as um we know with Governor Abbott's uh executive order GA thirty-four that he announced on March the second, um in which the mask mandates were lifted and businesses were open a hundred percent. And we then began to meet both as a college, the Higher Education Coordinating Board began to meet, TEA began to meet. And we all were looking to see what the guidance is on that. And the determination, as we have all seen, is that um everyone is able to make that decision base, you know, locally at our own entities. And we really at Brazosport College feel that the protocols that we have in place, that we've had in place, is what is keeping us safe and is what is keeping um us with the ability to have face-to-face classes, to have students come on campus, to have, to safely have faculty and staff on campus. And so even though that we're seeing some of the restrictions in our community that are lifted, for example, the mask ordinance, and those protocols remain in place at Brazosport College.
Appreciate it. Thank you. And Mr. Yuritu, are there any extra financial aid benefits for students that are specific to situations regarding COVID?
Yes, uh the federal government through the US Department of Education has made available financial aid emergency grants under various uh acts, you know, like the CARES Act. Um, last year, we were able to award uh students with these funds, you know, during the summer and the fall, those that were affected by COVID nineteen. And we are in the process right now uh during the spring semester to award additional funds to our students. But yeah, we do have uh funds available. The information, it's available on our website. Uh, and the students can always contact us directly if they have any specific questions.
Wonderful. And what is the best way to apply for scholarships and is there any instruction online when applying? And I believe whenever they're talking about instruction online, they're talking about the the Brazesport College page.
Sure. If they go to brazesport.edu slash scholarships, they can apply there. We have a software called Award Spring, that it's our online method for applications for scholarships. And they, it is uh on our website. They can apply through there. Uh, the website is pretty easy to navigate uh for those that are there for the first time. And in case they get stuck with the process, they can always contact us directly and we are happy to assist them uh with completing the application.
Wonderful. And what are some opportunities that financial aid offers that you wish more students would take advantage of? And what can we as students also help to inform other students?
Well, ideally, we would like for more of our students to apply for financial aid. Unfortunately, the majority of our students do not apply for financial aid uh and we're working hard to change this. We want them to apply for financial aid. There is funding available to our students. They just need to apply. Uh, some students may have a misconception about, well, I may not qualify for any financial aid. But the reality is that we cannot determine that unless they actually apply by submitting a FAFSA or the Free Application of Federal Student Aid. And like I said, uh, the majority of our students, they never complete a FAFSA. So if more of our students were to complete it, we would be able to tell them what they would qualify for. Uh, they could also uh try to apply for our scholarships that requires for them to complete a FAFSA as well. Uh, but again, our main issue here is students need to apply. So if you can pass along the word that, you know, they need to complete a FAFSA every school year and we will work with them uh the best we can, that'll be great.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right, for all of the panelists, um what goes into the process of finding a new president? I mean, I personally don't know everything that goes into the process and I'm sure it can be a very long and tedious process.
It's probably uh Dr. Diviny, you or I, that'll, that'll be the one to answer that question. So I'm happy to to start and then if there's anything I leave out, then then you can fill that in. So as we know, Dr. Balak uh shared her plans for retirement in January of twenty twenty-two. So what the next steps are is there's a special board meeting tonight uh where the Board of Regents will consider two outside search firms to conduct an official nationwide search for our next college president. So once the Board of Regents determines uh which search firm that they will go under contract with, then the nationwide search will begin and which will consist of um receiving applications and reviewing those applications. And it's, it's quite the process. And and that will probably entail the, some finalists coming to our campus for um forums or meetings with faculty, staff, students, and all of those, you know, all of those different groups. So that kind of answers your second question too. How's the process currently going? So tonight is when the interviews for the search firms will be and then the Board of Regents will make a determination on which firm they are to select. And Dr. Balak is excited about uh the next nine or ten months that she is still with us. A lot of work that's going to take place between now and then, as there are a lot of initiatives and and reaccreditation and our, our fifth year report, not reaccreditation, but various things that we have moving forward. And so it's quite the process, but it's a very formal process and um we're looking forward to the next steps. Dr. Diviny?
Summed it up well, Tracy. Um, uh, the only thing I'd add is that Dr. Valk has also expressed her confidence in being able to conduct a successful search, that she's confident that we'll be able to find a president um by the end of the year. So, but there are various groups that will weigh in. It's a long, big process. Um, uh, whichever search agency is is selected.
Wonderful. We appreciate y'all both answering that question. Thank you. Okay, so for graduation, I know Ms. Watts, you answered some of this earlier. Um, but for Grad Fest, there could be five hundred plus students picking up their graduation gowns between the span of two days and between the two hour time slot. Why are we unable to have some form of in-person graduation?
Sure. So Grad Fest ha- is being planned very strategically as in when we've had one-stop registration, keeping all of our social distancing in mind. And, you know, require or not allowing have, to have large groups gather at one period of time. So the difference is, is that with Grad Fest, we're able to have all of our safety protocols in place where with an in-person graduation, unfortunately, we're just not able to provide that social distancing based on the limitations that we have. And so I hope that answers the question.
It does. Thank you. Um, so to sum up the next question, why couldn't we just have multiple graduations out outdoors and potentially use a local high school football field um to allow graduates to walk across the, have that walking across the stage moment?
So those are definitely various avenues that we explored whenever as a committee we were looking to determine what our, what our plans were for twenty twenty-one. And again, after considering all the pros and all of the cons and even in with an outdoor celebration or even breaking um the graduations down by um either associate's degree or BAT or those type of things, really the decision came down to how is it that we can best have the graduation ceremonies to celebrate our students in the safest manner, which is a decision um in regards to a virtual ceremony.
And here are just some of the comments that we received on our jot form. Um, one question that I would like to ask is, if people, if this is really important to some of them, would y'all mind allowing them or looking at allowing them to participate in the next in-person graduation?
Absolutely. We um would definitely allow them to participate. If we have an in-person ceremony in twenty twenty-two, we would definitely allow them to participate and to walk in person in twenty twenty-two. They would just need to communicate that with our admissions and registrar's office um at the appropriate time.
Wonderful. Does anybody else have any final questions or have anything else that they would like to contribute to this virtual town hall? All right. Well, on behalf of the SGA, we would sincerely like to thank all of you guys for coming here and participating in our virtual town hall. I know I am thrilled that we finally got to uh be able to put this on after months of trying to, but we had a couple of bumps in the road. Um, but just thank every, thank you all for being here today and just know that it's greatly appreciated. All right, I am going to stop sharing my screen and then I will exit our meeting. I appreciate all of you guys. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Bye.